Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Met Irrigation District Board of Directors, November 9th, 2021. And this is also called a workshop. This is our new format, replacing committee meetings and special meetings. So, welcome to that. Thank you to the staff and Jennifer for co-ordinating the board with that. We're excited to transition into that new mode. Also, let's see, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I believe that this is the flag of the United States of America. And through the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, an individual with liberty and justice for all. All right, so also, in this format, we will be taking public comment as we belong. There'll be no specific time for that. If you would like to comment or ask questions, at any time, these two presentations today, star nine your phone, and we'll accommodate you to do that. We look forward to also to kick off our plan for water, anticipated year-end process, nine phases and 24 something meetings. So, we're excited to be starting this process and look forward to a robust discussion with the community and stakeholders. So, today is our general manager's birthday, so happy birthday, Jennifer.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Very nice.
All right, so first on the agenda today is the Recreation Department update with Monica Reyes.
Before Ms. Reyes starts off, I just wanted to say a couple of words. So, as Professor Wagon just stated, the intent of the workshop is to have routine updates from each of the departments. Some departments will go more often than on an annual basis. For example, engineering, because of the capital program, likely go more than once a year. Staff is always also more than happy to bring back any particular department anytime. But this is also intended to be a back and forth dialogue. So, as we start the process, Monica's going through, just please jump in and ask questions. If we're not clear on something, just let us know. If we want to clarify, or just have general questions or ideas for the coming years. So, it's kind of part your own review, it's part looking forward, and it's part sharing some good successes we've had. And I just wanted to say a big thank you to Monica. She is just absolutely a wonderful manager. She, her depth of caring and concern for her area, for her department, and all the campgrounds is amazing. I've been extremely impressed with her diligence and her concern and confidence, and I just think she's amazing. So, thank you, Monica. And with that, I think Monica will start.
Hey, so, I'd like to talk about...
Uh-oh. Okay.
Anybody, can we ask?
Can the folks at home let us know if you can hear us fine?
Somebody raised their hand.
Somebody raised, he's listening, whether it's a staff member.
Oh, there's one.
There's mine.
There's two.
Oh, there's Dustin.
Okay, Mr. Dustin.
Looks like everybody can hear us.
Dustin, is that me though? Dustin, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you just fine.
Okay, thanks, Dustin. Thank you. So, we will kick off the recreation 2021 activities, everything we've done so far. The first part is kind of like, it encompasses all of the campgrounds, and then I break it down into individual campgrounds. Showcase each one. Reservations open January 4th. Open reservations. Open January 4th, 2021 this year. And our, every year, we always do our tree work, and we try to get all of our tree work done before the start of the season. But this year, tree work was all year long. It didn't stop, whether it was lower division, upper division, mid-season, end of season. We were at the end of season, and now I feel like we need to start already. The trees are just really, really bad this year. Orchard Springs looks very naked right now. I think we need to plant some trees.
I saw that last week.
Yeah, exactly. We started the season before we opened, we had a massive cleanup. This year, we took it to the ground. We got rid of all the leaves and all the pine needles that go over the years. We did a crush, just have like a starting ground, and also because as the years go by, the picnic tables start to go into the dirt, and the fire rings start to, they're not lovely anymore. So, we just started to just, okay, got the big tractor now. I love my little saco, my big saco. And we just, we will scrape a lot of the old stuff off, and I was amazed at how many leaves and pine needles that we had at all the campground. Throughout the whole year, our temporary shortage on staff was, hit us really, really hard this year. Last year, I thought it was 2020, but 21 really hit us bad. And when we, where we really noticed it was when we opened for Memorial Day weekend. We were, all the campgrounds were fully booked, and we didn't have any issues. It was very, very hard for the staff that we had to keep up on everything. And at that point, we knew that we're going to have to make some changes in order to make sure that we can make it through the whole season. Typically, when I'm looking for staff, I can call Blue Ribbon Camp Rage. We can post up on our website and no problem getting people. This year, it was just, I called Blue Ribbon, and I'm like, Hannah, I need somebody. See what I can do, and it was cricket. There's just, nobody wanted to work. My hope in 2022 is that I have so much staff, I don't know what to do with them.
Open for, on June 1st, group sites didn't open until June 15th. Do you do the co-hosts for Stranglers still in place?
I don't know.
Okay, I'm going to pause. Is everyone green? Sorry. Picking it up. Ricky and Laura, can you check yours, make sure that they're hung up? We didn't connect your audio, but it's picking up. You are...
Mine says join audio, but I didn't join it.
Oh, I see, so if we have our...
Yeah, the feedback.
You listen?
I don't know who's picking up.
Because I don't think mine is doing it.
Okay, I'm just doing a little... That was really strange. Should be muted. Let's try this. Okay, we're going to continue. Our stores and all of our campgrounds were closed this year because of the lack of staff. We did have arenas open, fuel sales at Long Raveen and Scott Flat. Sales weren't as, you would think because we had so many motors, because we were rolling and had the only game in town. Because of all the, you know, we had several lakes that weren't even open this season, and we were busy, but they were coming out fully loaded with gas. So, our fuel were low, but it was not bad. We had, this year, a lot of our groups, church groups and our school groups, they didn't come back this year. Just because of the year of COVID, a lot of our church groups are the older community, and so they decided to stay home. Although, I am getting calls for next year. So, I'm excited to bring everybody back and get the campgrounds up and running, because we're so much fun. Fire restrictions, we have to affect on June 17th in our lower division campgrounds. As you all know, we had issues with the upper division and the Forest Service. So, stopped selling firewood up at the upper division. And the, I had the camp host go to the campsite and just let them know that although we were in fire restrictions, I'm sure that they had already talked to the Forest Service and the Forest Service, saying, if you have a fire. So, we were trying to hold them prior to coming, just to say if they could retain, that would be easier. Now, we weren't selling wood. So, for the part, fire restrictions, once they go into effect, people get it. And especially if you live here, or you live in somewhere that's forested, you get it. And you can have, you can have fun camping with a campfire. I mean, we still bring in the, people still bring in their propels, but you don't have to have... I remember this one gentleman's like, wow, I'm supposed to feed my kids, and I'm like, well, I'm not a camper, but I'm just like, trying to think out of the... Like, well, there's other ways, just other than having something. The River Bear, August 1st, was just, it was just one of those experiences that, I mean, just being in the area. I did not, you know, I feel for those that lost their home, 100%. But for us, to be able to do a three campground in the snap of a finger in less than two hours, just awesome. That was a Thursday, and... I'm on hold.
Sorry, everyone.
Okay.
So, I forgot, it's on your...
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
I just wanted to say the audio's cutting in and out pretty bad. It seems like you're trying to troubleshoot, we just wanted to confirm from our end.
Is that better?
Yeah, that did sound better, but it's almost like every other sentence is cutting out, so I'm not sure. I can raise my hand again if there's another issue.
That seemed to help.
Okay, I think it should be better. So, we can try to re-check our audio. Yeah. Thank you for letting us, can you let us know if it is not fixed? Okay, back on. Yeah. And on the River Bear, it was our camp host, they were awesome. They got everybody out, and, you know, I wasn't worried about that because it's further out. It was smooth, and it's nice to know that campgrounds are, we have people at our campground that, that phone a text message, and they get them out, they're on it. And, you know, they have their own, you know, their camp, they're living there, and they're scared as well. They need to get their bags together and get everything together, but it worked out really, really, really awesome. It was great.
Monica, everybody packed up everything and left?
No, Orchard Springs has people that left. They, because it was closest to Orchard, that's why we had trailers there still. We had tents, I mean, it kind of looked like just an abandoned city. Monica, hold on one second, I think we're responding audio issues. Can you confirm whether or not we're still having audio issues? Something that we do.
Hi, yeah, it's Kiko at Circle. Still having audio issues, so sorry. It sounds maybe like the main mic is having issues.
No, I don't think it's just you.
I think a recess may come along.
Yeah, we're going to need a recess.
Okay, so we're going to take a recess, for those that are watching, to try to sort out our audio problem.
Thanks so much.
Reset. Okay.
Okay.
We're going to resume, go ahead, Monica.
I'm back on. Okay, July, July and September, we had several cancellations due to the second wave of COVID, and also fires and smoke. Our biggest issue, believe it or not, was clogged sewer lines. I mean, we always have that as an issue, but this year, it was major because of all that hand wipe that people like to put on the lines. And when you have old lines, old terrafoam lines, it doesn't work very well.
And we don't provide those, right?
No, it's all, exactly, yes.
Wow.
And the same thing up at Jackson Meadows, we had the same issue as well, so.
They need to...
Big signs next year.
They do need to ban them.
Water levels below, we had many hazards. One of our other biggest problems, because the water was so low, vehicle and O H V use on our shorelines and in our lake beds. You can see the bottom picture there. It can't see it very well on the screen, but on your paper, you should be able to see that we had a car, a van stuck in, on the shoreline.
Does that cost them a little bit?
It did, because they were trying to get out of it and not, you know, they want, they had hired their own people to kind of help, and it's like, no, 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 no. And maybe we're going to do this, and you could pay a cent because we want it done right. So, yeah, and at Jackson Meadows, especially moment, it was, it was a racetrack out there, and it was horrible, just horrible.
Is there any way we can keep them from doing that? Is it one of our rules and regulations?
It is a rule and regulation, but when you're out there and it's little old me yelling at somebody saying, get out!
You write tickets and charge money?
Who is N I D? And Forest Service has helped, but they were short staff because of all the fires. And we did have, we met with the Sheriff's Department before the start of the season, but they weren't, I didn't really see much of a presence this year. I mean, I'm, they're busy too, but they were out there on a Thursday, and I'm like, guys, we need you out here Friday, Saturday. That's when everything happens, so. So, we're just going to get lots of rain for next year, and won't even have to worry about that.
Do abandoned vehicles make good fish habitat?
No.
No.
Not at all.
We were fortunate because all of our mooring balls and our boat slip rentals were able to stay the full time, so that was great. We didn't have to cut anybody out or ask them to leave early. We did, we, back in 2019, we started to really focus on our night security and doing foot patrol instead of truck patrol. Because I feel like if you get out there and you talk to people, you're face to face, and they kind of feel more responsible and more like, I don't want to let you down a little bit, so I'm going to play good. We also, we have this strategy where we go and we talk to them, we talk to the campsite one time before having an issue. And it's just, you know, you need to quiet down. If I have to come back, I'm going to have to ask you to leave, and it seems to work. So, before 2017 and 18, a lot of our campgrounds were just party central, and I can see that that is, that atmosphere has been changing the last several years, so.
Good job.
Very good.
I think I was only called out once this year to go meet the sheriff at one of the campgrounds. Where in 2017 and 18, I felt like I lived at the campground, 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning. So, yeah, so things are getting better. And then, our official quote, you know, the camp season was September 30th, and we basically start our work for the next year. So, I'm going to go a little bit faster because we are running out of time. Scott Flat, some of our projects that we completed, retaining wall replacement, you've all seen that, it's beautiful, I love it. At the beginning of the season, we did have to modify our check-in procedures. Because when Scott Flat was developed, our gate houses, at the time, our gate houses where they're located were great, but also RVs and trailers were, you know, maybe 15 to 20 feet. Now, you get houses on wheels, so before, we would be able to stack maybe three trailers, four trailers, before they hit the gatehouse to go in. Now, we get two 40-footers, and we've got backup on the road. So, and I think you've heard some of that, Ricky.
Oh, yeah.
So, we, after, the Memorial Day weekend was an eye-opener for us, and we worked really, really hard to make sure that that didn't happen. And unfortunately, sometimes it does, but we had, I had staff out on the road, we had signs, slow down, so we really tried to ease a lot of that and help out our neighbors, so they felt safer. With a lot, water levels being so low, we were able to reset our mooring ball lines and our gas stock lines. We've been having trouble the last couple of years with our mooring ball snapping because way back when, and I don't know how many years ago, but when they put in those lines, they didn't, they didn't use stainless steel. So, a lot of the lines are just breaking. So, we were able to get a lot of that replaced this year because the lake was, all the lakes were low. So, we kind of went through everything to try to clean things out. Future projects, we need to upgrade our play area. It's wooden, it's rotted, so we need to work on that. We have site pad issues at Scott Flat. A lot of our pads are now, instead of being like a concrete pad or an asphalt pad, slabs, they're more like a rock pile because they're just old, beat up. So, we just, stuff we need to work on. And our store and arena rooms need to be replaced. There's a little picture of that. One thing I do want to kind of hit on is the fire safety, the firing safety. This year at Scott Flat, we kind of tried something just different. It was about 20 sites, we put rock around the, we reset the firing, and then we put rock around it about five to six feet out. We were thinking of fire safety, and we were kind of like, well, we weren't kind of sure how that was going to work just because when you get ash in there and the ash with the rock, it worked out well. So, we're going to continue that. Good. Okay, next slide. Orchard Springs, we had camp host house kitchens and bathroom repair. The meadow stage repair, you can see down here in the left campsite, pretty rotted, so we got all that fixed up. And just one of the things that we've done, this was the second year, we had the Chicago Park School Track Meet. It's at the end of our season, they come in, they love it because at Chicago Park, they can only have so many schools, but they're getting up to 10 to 12 schools participating now. So, every year, it's getting a little bit bigger. I kind of just turn over the campground to them, they get it clean, they leave it clean, and it's just great, so it's fun. Future projects for them, this is, this goes back to M and R meetings. We need to order some picnic tables and umbrellas for the, for the side of the store with the new store. And then, we need to get some type of a shade structure. It's really, really warm there, and the play structure gets really hot, so.
So, Monica, I was on M and R during this whole thing, and I really, I kind of recalled that we approved a budget item to install that shade structure because I was part of the...
Yeah, we've talked about it.
And they cut back, and didn't build a shade structure, and then we knew it was too hot, and they had to have a shade structure. So, it never did, I always assumed it happened.
No, it never, it hasn't. Well, I think because COVID hit in 2020, so it kind of just, a lot of things stalled, and then 2021, it just wasn't budgeted, and it just wasn't rebudgeted.
So, will we see that in the budget in 2022?
We should. Well, I mean, there's, we're going to have to spread money around, but we'll figure it out now. Long Raveen, safety precautions were added to the boat slip entry. This picture that I have down on the right-hand side does not, does not show the dangerous entry. I was trying to get the good camera angle, and I just couldn't get it, but this is extremely steep. So, we added railings, and we also added some flats so when people were walking down in their flip flops or carrying their, you know, their coolers with them that they wouldn't fall. But we do have a plan to make it so no matter what the water level is, it will be safe during the season. And the problem was, as the water level dropped and dropped and dropped, it just kept getting more steep and steep. So, that will be fixed before next year. One of the biggest problems we had even for Long Raveen and Orchard Springs was the water level fluctuation up and down. T G D, giving us water, taking it out, giving us water, taking it out. So, that was really hard to keep the boat slips stationary, but it just became a thing where it's like, okay, five times a day, somebody's out there checking them, and then first thing in the morning, you're out there. So, it worked out, but it was just, it was a lot of work. Next slide. Peninsula, basically, we just focused on hazard tree work, and they had a lot of plumbing repairs this year. Didn't really have a lot of projects going there because we had bought boat slips for them in 2020, so kind of like to spread the funds out. Future project for them, I'd really, really like to create some type of a day-use swim area. Usually, their day use is so-so, but this year, it was, it was pretty, it was higher than it's ever been. So, I don't know, was it COVID or what? The end of COVID, it was hot, people wanted to get out. And let's see, Greenhorn, I have, I have a great relationship with the Luceras, they're our concessionaire. I helped them plan and replace the old sewer pumps. We ended up going with some grinding pumps. Their sewer, their sewer, their sewer system is extremely close to the lake. And so, we get warnings all the time, and I have to give them a call and say, okay, I think you guys, I think you guys got a flood going on, you need to deal with it before it gets to the lake. So, with the new grinding pumps, nobody used it all this summer, so it was great.
How long is their contract with them?
I think another 17 years.
See, I thought, I, that was on my list to ask you. I thought that they had announced they were going to resign or retire.
They did contact me, they contacted about a year and a half ago and said they were interested, and at that time, we had said, you know, you're, you know, come to us first before you go out. And then, I talked to them, Mary Ann, about a month ago, and they had somebody that was interested, but it hasn't gone any further.
The contract is assignable. We do have the ability to approve the assignment of the contract. And it's typically, when you see assignment clauses in contracts, it's, you can't, you can only deny it for a reasonable reason. It doesn't even have that language in there. So, I do think there is some way of taking a look at the contract to improve it in any way we'd like to, if they were to try to assign it, if we wanted to approve it.
So, my question is back to the capital improvements or the facilities, do we pay for all of those? Is that our responsibility?
For Lucera?
Yes.
We don't, we don't have to, but it is in the contract that we will help them.
Okay.
Whether that's verbally, financially, planning, whatever.
Okay.
So, I do help them.
So, is that, is that like negotiable each time an issue comes up, if something needs to be fixed?
Typically, they take care of everything. This was a bigger item, so I did, we did help them.
By not only planning, but did we purchase the grinding pumps as well?
Yes, we did.
And we only currently, what is the percentage of the revenue we get under the contract?
Right now, it's only 7%.
Which is low.
Exactly. And most of our concessionaire, concessionaire contracts are at 10%. So, I did let Mary Ann and her know that if this did go through, that that would be one of the things that we would want to do, is definitely raise that percentage.
And is that negotiable in the contract?
No, but if they were to go through the assignment, and we're required to approve the assignment of the contract, we would require that as part of that.
Okay. Something new every day, don't you?
Yeah. And then, future for them is just to continue to help them and guide them. We are working on their rates for 2022 and helping them with that.
They have a difference.
We can cry a while, so we're getting them, I'm helping them get them.
That was my question too, about the recommendation about raising the rate, and do those match up to what the Luceras are charging? Or how is...
No, our, our day use, our day use path and our boat paths are the same as theirs, or theirs are the same as ours because they're selling a path to the same lake we are, so it only makes sense. They haven't been in the past, but where I've gotten to that point where it's like, we're all, you're selling a path to the same lake that we are, whether they enter your boat launch or ours, it's still the same lake. The camping, their camping is different than ours, as far as rates, but I think you also have to take into consideration the camping experience. It's, I feel that we offer a better camping experience. Our lake fronts are truly lake fronts. Some of their lake fronts are lake, and you're at the lake, but you just can't get into the water because there's trees, old trees, and it's, it's just not lake front where you can walk in and get in. You have to maneuver around just old debris.
Debris.
Combi? We have brought all the Combi Dock owners files up to date, verified ownership, made sure that everyone has the up-to-date insurance, and that payments were up to date. I think there's only four people that are delinquent on their payment, and we have about 124 Combi docks. So, that's pretty good for us, and I will continue to try to get those dock fees out of them. Future projects, we are going to work on the N I D, with the N I D... Future projects, we are going to work on the NID, with the NID encroachments to get those unauthorized encroachments done. I know that I've said this time and time again, but I have talked to Doug. We're going to team up because he's done, his encroachments department is low in staff and I'm in a winter mode, so we're going to just whip it out this winter. That is our goal, right?
Yep.
Good.
Moving forward. Okay, next slide. Jackson Meadows and Bowman Corridor. It's always the same with their trees and fixing leaks. You turn on the system and they, it gets so cold up there, you go to turn on the system, there's always going to be a leak somewhere. This year, we had some issues with our water, our, our water tanks and our spring fields. We were able to get wood camps back up and running. Had a, this leak over here, this, this pipe on the right-hand side. There was a, there was a root wrapped around it, which caused a crack, which was giving some, some issues. But we were able to get that, that side back up and running. And actually, it was overflowing all season long, which was amazing. Aspen side is still, when we left two weeks ago, it was still dry. So, whatever happens next year with Forest Service will, may tackle it, we may not, I don't know.
Yes, we're, just to give a little bit of an update. So, as the board is aware, I had expressed some pretty significant concern with the current concessionaire contract that NID entered into the Forest Service. We did notify them that we would not be basically resigning a new contract when it expires in December or at the end of the year. And they have then come back and have indicated that they would still like to, to have a discussion as to whether or not we can reach agreements on the portions of the agreement that are not to the benefit of the district. And those are specifically the inability to control campfires when we feel necessary or when there are low water supplies. The indemnity and legal liability clauses are associated to any fires that would occur. The inability to set rates at a, at a level that we feel necessary for cost recovery. So, we've, we've kind of come back with that and basically said, you know, those are deal breakers for us. So, that conversation is still in process.
That was my last question.
Very good. That was mine too.
Yeah, our attorney is talking to their attorney tomorrow.
Oh, good. And when does the contract expire?
December thirty-first.
December of this year.
And we provided them the notice regarding the desire to not enter into another concessionaire agreement, but maybe six, eight weeks ago. So, we wanted to give them ample time and we've offered to assist with transition in any way possible so it's easier for them. But one of the fundamental issues in my mind outside of the legal risks and some of the liability indemnity issues is that essentially they are arbitrarily setting their rates low and they're subsidizing the campers. You know, this is problematic from our standpoint in that we don't feel that the subsidy is warranted and that our requirements are forklifts, don't legally require to subsidize any activating. And so, that, you know, that's a little bit of a sticking point. But I think there might be some more, a little bit more leeway than we originally thought with that issue.
Very good.
I have one quick question, Monica, about the focused on NID-owned campgrounds. Can you remind me again, what are the NID-owned campgrounds up there?
Aspen Group, Silver Tip Group, Fosherie Group, and Bowman Campgrounds, but that's a no fee campground, but the others are all fees.
Okay. And they're all group camp?
They're all group camping, yes. And we, and those, we set our own rates. Those are all up to date. Forest, Forest Service-owned campgrounds are twenty-four dollars.
Okay.
Thank you. This year, we also did install some water restrictions, well, not some, all water restrictions on all the spigots up there. So, we took the gallons per minute from a spigot from twenty gallons a minute to one point five gallons a minute. So, just thinking conserving water and because a lot of times, you know, people just turn it on and just let it flow and it's all over the place, so we, we did that. Future projects, you know, if, if, if we end up, you know, leaving or giving back Forest Service their campground, is to have a seamless transition. We've had an awesome relationship with them and I want to continue that. We, whether it's camping, water, you know, the meadows, we're, we are going to cross paths. So, we just, we just need to stay friendly. And we do, you know, if the US Forest Service wants help with the spring field next year or Aspen tanks, we, since we kind of have an idea of what, what might be wrong, we've offered our help to them as well. As you can see down at the bottom here, we do a little bit of everything. We've got, on the left, we've got some garbage pickup. That is a, that is an average day at the Bowman Corridor. It's just, that's, you know, if, that's a pack-in, pack-out area. That's, we pull out that much garbage and a lot of that's human waste.
They pack in, we pack out.
Exactly. And then this year, because we had issues with the water, we couldn't get anybody to deliver any porta potties. So, the Anderson Septic is who we use. They're a local company here in Grass Valley and they couldn't, they had the porta potties and they, they gave them to us empty and we took them up there and then they took care of them from there. So, we just do a little bit of, everything's going. And then I did also include a little, my graph of the participation counts, just so you can kind of see history. Like I said, our day use for Peninsula and even for Long Ravine was, was just high, way higher than normal. And I think for Peninsula, I don't, I don't know what the correlation is, but Long Ravine, we have a lot of boats. And they're right next to the freeway, so you can easy on, easy off. So, that's kind of where we were there. That's my beautiful picture of Jackson Meadows, because I like to take pictures when I'm up there. Some of the fun things that happen around the campground this year, we had the Penguin Swim Club there. They normally swim at Memorial, they're getting their pool redone. And so, they were going to be swimming at Pioneer. They didn't have any boobies of any sort, so between Hydro and Rec, we came up with them. We made them a booby line and they're borrowing that, so we'll get that back once they're done. Scott's always has their No Motor Day, it's always fun. This year, we did have a lot of participants, although the water, the, not water, the weather wasn't all that great. And we did not have the barbecue, but next year, I think we're just going to go for it. Sawmill, our little picture of a little hut that we found, the things you find when you're out in the middle of nowhere. Literally sawmill, you're out in the middle of nowhere. Gold Country Yacht Club, this is a picture of their regatta. They did not have the regatta in two thousand and twenty. Twenty-one, they had one, it was downsized quite a bit. Twenty-two, they're hoping to have, be back up to normal. We did, we were able, they were able to and we were able to make it work where we had the use. Sailing was out for two weeks, learning how to sail. And we even had a couple of days where the, we had a little sailing pool, so that was awesome. And then a little picture of the Chicago Park Track Meet. For two thousand and twenty-two, all campgrounds will be open and fully staffed. That is my goal, my wish, my dream, it's going to happen. All campground stores will be open. We will have our new registers up and running. We actually have a test register that we will get going and use the month of December. And then by January one, when we are rolling for the new year, we will have all the registers at the, at the campgrounds. And that will help us with our auditor signing.
Yeah, that's, that's an important component.
Of the cash handling.
Yes. So, we are moving, we are definitely moving forward on that now. We anticipate all of our churches, school groups playing back in full force. Law enforcement and military groups, they like to use our campgrounds and our, and our trails for training exercises. We did have some come back this year, but I anticipate, I've already been getting phone calls. So, it's going to be, we're going to be having that next year, which will be great. Paddleboard yoga will go back at Scott Flat. It's on Sunday night if you want to come, it's really fun. Mountain Rec puts that on, so it's, I only did it once, but it was fun. No Motor Day, we're going to have that again. The Easter egg hunt, I anticipate that being again at Orchard Springs. Gold Country Yacht Club, we're going to have the big regatta. The Barbara Smith Marla Triathlon, this year it was turned into a new athlon. Bike and run only, and then it ended up just going to, to a virtual. So, hopefully next year, we have water back in the lake and we can just have a full, full gold triathlon like we normally do. Next year will be the twenty-seventh year at Scott Flat, so that's pretty fun. Again, Chicago Park Track Meet, NID operating the Upper Division Campgrounds. Again, this was, I wrote this, this report before we had started negotiations with the Forest Service, so that may change. Right now, we have the era pontoon boat rentals at Long Ravine and I'd like to expand that to Scott Flat and also Orchard. I do get a lot of calls and my staff gets a lot of calls asking for that. So, and they're willing to kind of expand out and test the water, so I think we should do that. And then also, Scott Flat has dry storage during the winter months. Well, we have it year-round and then we kind of bulk up during the winter months. I'd like to try that at Long Ravine and see if we can earn a little bit of extra income, extra revenue. So, when we are, when we start, at the start of the season, when we start renting out the boat slips, we're going to develop some type of a handout or something, seeing how, what kind of additions we have.
Is dry storage just on your trailer in a parking lot?
Yeah, it's just for boats.
Boats.
Yeah. And we have about thirty of them over at Scott Flat right now. Seventy-five bucks a month, so, above, so, and they just sit there.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions?
House books.
I just have one question about the Scott Flat project down there at the ditch tenders house.
Yes.
There has been some talk about doing weddings and then COVID hit. And I imagine that didn't happen, or whatever event. So, were there any events there this year?
We didn't have any events because there was still restrictions into June fifteenth and at that point, we just, we just kind of kept it, see the house closed. It was rented almost every single weekend to NID employees for lakefront camping. So, did earn a little bit of extra income there, but our plan is to definitely expand. Two thousand and twenty-one, we did have two employees that we had wedding, different weddings there, but then they got canceled and then they were going to move it on to two thousand and twenty-one, but then one decided to do a destination wedding and the other one was having a baby, so that's.
Okay. But so, it's still there.
That's what I think, yes.
There hasn't been a lot of use.
There hasn't, we have, no, not the house itself. I mean, we've had, we had a meeting, a hydro meeting there with Nevada County OES and Fire Department and some sheriff, we've had some of that. But, I mean, nothing where we have earned any revenue.
Okay, thank you. Gosh, you guys do a great job. Thank you so much.
Very much so.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to acknowledge too that recreation is a really important part of what NID does. And I think sometimes you can be overshadowed by the other focus of conversation. And, but this means a lot to a lot of people. I mean, your numbers of people served is extremely impressive. And if you want to make it a little more impressive, you can add total columns right there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we're talking about, you know.
Yes, a lot.
A hundred thousand plus people that you're supporting. And having been one of your campers, I was totally blown away by the quality of what the facilities are and the beauty of the environment. So, I, I want to just say thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you. Either they, we're making them better. That's our goal.
I love your enthusiasm.
Yes, absolutely.
Like it's your personal project.
It is.
Ownership, I guess, you know.
Exactly.
Well, it's great. I mean, that's what we would want, you know, and from a district employee. And, you know, and you and I've had a lot of talks about it over the last couple of years. And I just think you're fabulous and I love how you take ownership of those campgrounds and make them the best they can be, so thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Any member of the public at this time would like to comment or ask any questions about the recreation before we move on, start on your phone? Okay, thank you, Monica. And luck in two thousand and twenty-two. Better luck.
Exactly.
All right. Next item, kick off our plan for water workshop, system overview. Go ahead, Jennifer.
President Beer Wagon for interrupting you before Mr. Post gets started. I was just going to kind of set the stage for kind of kicking this off and.
This, this thing?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll get into that, Chris.
Okay. I can't, oh, I don't have it. Oh, at the top, yes.
We have eighty participants.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six?
Including us.
Oh, right.
Eighty attendees.
It is. I am exhausted. I am very blind, I can't see the tree.
Well, I was just saying, we have eighty, eighty people online.
Wonderful.
Isn't that wonderful?
Yeah, it's great.
I am delighted and excited.
All right, so we are going to kind of start kicking off this, this process we've been all excited about, talking about for a long time. I know there's been a lot of effort put in on, we have the board, members of the community, those who have participated in the past, and of course, staff. Staff has been working really hard to gear up for this. What I thought I would do is just kind of start out with, I know everybody has a lot of apprehension, I think. I have talked to a lot of different community groups. I think that there is some concern with possibly how NID has interacted with the community in the past. And so, I'm really hoping that we can have a process that's open. And I keep saying, you know, that the theme of our process is really intended to meet people where they're at. So, this is going to be a fairly long process that we're kicking off this evening. And it'll be probably about eighteen months long, numerous meetings, you know, eighteen to twenty meetings and possibly more meetings. It's going to go from a very high overview of our system and water rights to then through a comprehensive strategic planning process that will tier off some of the effort that we completed before. And then we'll kind of get really into the meat of the work, which is the real data, heavy, intensive modeling effort. And that's where we'll look at the hydrology, we'll look at our dam needs and then our supply needs. And then the final last two stages of the process are really intended to flush out a variety of different solutions to our future supply needs. There is not any one way that is perfect. And I have heard over and over again, and I do completely understand some of the concern and some of the interest in this process. There are many people who are very concerned regarding the Centennial Dam process. And this, this project and this particular process is not intended to in any way support the former Centennial Dam project. The Centennial Dam project isn't the outcome of this process by any means. What this process is, is to look at facts and data and then go through a thoughtful process to obtain input so that the board can help identify those solutions and strategies that we would then rely on in the future to meet our future water supply needs. And so, with that said, I thought, and Chris, we can go to the next slide. So, I know that there is a lot of concern. I've already heard concerns from members of the community and other people that have participated over the years. So, I was, thought we would kind of start with just a quick overview. Our, our intent as staff is not, I can certainly tell you I have absolutely zero interest in any preconceived solution. I'm very interested in hearing the facts of data and seeing what comes out from the modeling standpoint. I, this is going to be heavily on public input. So, with that said, you know, like I said, it's, public, meet us where you're at or we will meet you where you're at. So, that doesn't mean you have to participate in all eighteen stages, but that does mean that you can come in and participate in any way that you desire to or that works with you in your schedule. I know that there's many members of the community, of the agricultural community that have normal nine to five jobs or in the ag world, probably more like five to five AM to nine PM jobs. And so, it is a little bit difficult for them to participate. And so, with that said, you know, we are open to having one-on-one meetings. We are open to having focus group meetings. We are open to having phone calls. We are open to participating in meetings with directors and their constituents. We will meet you where you're at. You just let us know how, how that works for you and what would work best for you and we will try to make that happen. We are going to be very, very data-driven. There's going to be times where it's going to get awfully down into the weeds. And our goal is that we have heard in the past that there were some concerns related to some of the modeling efforts. They have, as is typical with most agencies, there is always a, agencies end up, and I've seen it before, they build this model after model based off of an original historic model. And when you get ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, it can oftentimes be difficult to even ascertain what the original assumptions or any more that are used. ascertain what the original assumptions or any more that are used to build the model. So we will be daylighting all of those and building the models up from scratch, bringing the assumptions forward to the board for consideration to allow the public as well as the board to understand what is behind those assumptions and how those models would work. We are in the process of preparing our scope of work for the modeling effort right now. We are asking for feedback from a variety of members of the community, especially those who have participated with us in some of the modeling efforts that was undertaken for the FERC relicensing effort that previously happened. One of the things I've noticed with modeling is you often, a model, once it is framed up and the, essentially the inputs and the framework of the model are made and you get down, you know, eight months, nine months later, if the model is not set up in a way to allow for easy extrapolation of data in a manner that is desired or easily understood by the public, that can cause a lot of frustration. A lot of times when that happens, you'll hear the public want, you know, one scenario to look one way and another scenario to look another way. And it's not possible because of the way the model was actually built. And so we're trying to head off some of those issues early. It will help reduce frustration, it'll help set the expectation for the consultant and it'll help give us a really sound scope of work. So moving forward, you know, it's going to be an integrated approach. We're science driven, we're about facts and logic, but we do want you to participate in the public and, and we also ask that everybody be patient and flexible. As things go on, we will continuously, every single meeting we have, in the beginning and at the end of the meeting, we will revisit what we did and how the process went and what kind of our next step is to see if we need to change anything. Nothing is set in stone by any means, this isn't a one shot at anything. So we will continue, so we look at things, talk about them and approve upon them. Can you go to the next slide, Chris? So just the ground rules and, you know, this is up for discussion, input, we cross them all out. But I just thought it was a good thing for the public members who are participating, with staff as well as the board, to have some kind of agreement on how we interact through this process. These processes can sometimes be contentious, they can sometimes create a lot of frustration and even honestly anger. And so I think that we can all kind of mutually agree to a set of rules, that it might help us out on the right foot. And then when one of us is not adhering to the rules or we're kind of off track, we can always point back to them. So just as the, I've stated before, this process is not intended to have a, you know, three hour presentation and then three minutes of public comment. This is really intended to be an open back and forth dialogue, whether that be with board and staff, staff and the board, the public and staff, or even staff and the board asking the public questions. This is intended to be all encompassing. So it's really not intended to kind of be that traditional three minute of public commentary. I like that back and forth dialogue is encouraged. In mutual respect, we have a lot of very different positions and they're also very important positions. And I don't think that they are exclusive of one another. You know, we have folks in this community that their ability to feed their families and their livelihood depends on their ability to obtain water through NID at a reasonable rate. We have the environment, which is very important, not only to those that care deeply about it, but it's also very, very important to the health of our watershed. And we have the rate pairs, right? We have kind of that, we have a business group that is extremely important, that kind of goes in that livelihood category, but then we just have the normal rate pair. You might just be a residential rate pair. And all of those concerns are equally important, I believe, and I think that they should be heard and flushed out as much as possible. So, and that kind of goes to mutual respect. You know, it's certainly okay to disagree. I hope that, you know, staff, we are professionals, I know that the board are professionals and, you know, it's okay to have a disagreement. That's what makes for good public policy moving forward. If you don't have a public policy that's not pushed on on all ends, is it, in my opinion, well banked? So I always like to make sure good public policy, especially the hard public policy is well banked. And that means that we do have to go through a period of disagreement. So I hope that we are all supportive of that. Anything that's off topic or just maybe not relative or we want to get back to, we're just in parking lot, we'll kind of keep a running list and check in with that list at the beginning and end of each meeting so that we can make sure that we're not forgetting anything. And there's always the attack the problems, not the people. That's a big one that I know we all agree with, something I still work on with my kids and, you know, it's something we have to keep working on for our lives, I decide throw that on there. And, you know, we, I talked a lot about this, this process is intended to meet people where they're at. So that doesn't mean that your only engagement has to be in these public meetings. It could be via a phone call, it could be meeting with a board member, or it could be meeting with Mr. Jones. It could be in any way, shape or form that you are comfortable with. You know, there are no stupid questions or ideas. We're going to throw everything out on the table and that's how we will come up with the best public policy and the best ideas or solutions for any of our challenges that we face. Everyone has a voice. And then lastly, this is, this is really important to the board and it's also important to me because I know, I don't, that some people might question my sanity by kind of facilitating this effort myself. I clearly have better job security if I kind of shove that off to somebody else. But I do want to just, that we all agree that if we need a facilitator, we just do that. You know, that's okay. And maybe it's a one-time facilitator, maybe this is just going off the rails and we need a full-time facilitator, but I am certainly open and supportive of that effort and I would very much like the board's consideration of also supporting that consideration. And then with that, is there anything we're missing?
I just have a question about the three minute and the public participation and the length of the meeting. So do we propose a timeframe on the length of the meeting or just let it go?
No, I, I think that if we let the, make any meeting, in my opinion, that really exceeds the three hour mark, very non-productive. And it also, it starts to pose a number of issues, from people not being able to pay attention, members of the public not being able to participate, most people don't have that much free time. And so I do think, you know, some of that plan is to kind of pair a workshop topic with the Plan for Water, kind of keep that workshop topic to the hour maximum. So if we're starting workshops at three and then we plan for water, try to be complete by six, you know, that does limit our time. And so of course, as a group, so does I guess, we can always continue that. But I do think it is important to not cut public comment or participation short in, in terms of time for the meeting. But what that means is that if we're having a lot of questions, we just need to schedule another meeting. We need to not be married to the 18 meetings or 19 meetings. But, you know, I would ask that members of public as well as the board and staff, you know, I do, there are a lot of comments revisiting the past, you know, we are going to, if something's not relative to exactly what we're doing today, or in a parking lot that, and we could have an off-topic conversation about that because we do want to kind of keep this moving forward.
And you'll have the authority to do that.
That would be great. She takes the authority.
Well, I mean, stay on topic.
We do need to stay on topic.
Stay on topic.
And move.
Some, I like the way you framed that. Okay, if, if we go past the two, three hours, then we, we continue it. I like that better than, than stopping it and.
Right. I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. So for the comments that we received, and I anticipate a very robust group, I mean, I think I saw that there are 80 people there, which is wonderful and extraordinary. How do we capture the comments? You know, in other words, how do we make certain that those comments are safe? I mean, I presume there's going to be a lot of really important information that we need to continue to have and capture and integrate to this process. How are we going to do it?
Yeah, so maybe, Chris, we can go on to the next slide.
Maybe just see if the public has any.
Good segue.
Yeah, do we have any other?
Good segue.
Good segue? I didn't know it was a segue.
Before we move on to logistics, were there any other questions or comments from the public regarding the ground rules?
There you go.
And none of these are, like I said, none of these are set in stone and we could continue to add to them? Or if, you know, somebody such as myself is misbehaving, we can simply address that in a special rule.
Camp ground cleanup.
All right. Any more comments here? I am not seeing any public comments before we move on. Oh, here we go. John Meeker, please provide your comment.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay. The way the Zoom is set up, we see the board members and we see the NID boardroom, but we can't see who is speaking and the name of the person that was speaking. And I was a couple of minutes late getting on because of the notice. So who is speaking and is there a way to put a camera on that person?
No, we do have, I'm not going to be speaking the whole time, Mr. Close. So this is Jennifer Hansen, I'm the general manager, and let me, let me put that as an action item for staff to address moving into the future. I do think that is going to pose a problem with our Zoom environment. So thank you for that comment, we'll give that address.
Thank you.
Can we move the large camera closer, at least for tonight, so people can see?
It doesn't, yeah. You need the rest of the camera.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Meeker has a great comment and we will work on that. I can see how that's frustrating.
Work just to announce our name?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can announce our name for now and then when we're doing long presentations, we'll go ahead and have camera on staff. Will you go ahead and announce your name now? I did. Do it again, Jennifer Hansen, General Manager. I have an eyesight issue. Barbara Ravines, please go ahead.
Hello, my name's Barbara Ravines. Hello, everybody. I am trying to find out how to make a comment and apparently I learned how to do it by just raising my, hitting, doing, pushing the button. So I apologize for taking your time, if that's the right way to do it.
No problem. And so that for anybody watching, if you're not familiar with Zoom, one of the easiest ways to make any type of comment is to utilize the raise hand button and then we'll call you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, no problem. Please, we see George Allen. Mr. Allen, you are next.
Yes, thank you very much. I did not hear what you said about the role of the facilitator, Ms. Hansen. Could you repeat what you said? I wasn't sure whether, you said you plan to be the facilitator, whether you're going to look for a professional facilitator? I appreciate you repeating that. Thank you.
Yes, so as of right now, for the most part, I will be facilitating the process unless we get to a real sticky issue and we feel that a facilitator would be helpful in working through that issue.
Jennifer, could you briefly describe your experience leading public sessions like this in your prior life?
Yeah, sure, no problem. So I've been fortunate and when I first started my career, when I started working at Caltrans, I was selected to go, it was an eight-week training program and it was for facilitation as well as training to be a trainer. And so the purpose of that was I was a statewide trainer for new, actually new water quality, stormwater rules that came out. And so that's where I kind of really first got my facilitation feet underneath me. And then when I worked as a consultant in the transportation industry, I had the benefit of working on, I did facilitation with large community groups for two large transportation projects up in the Tahoe Basin area, as well as as a city manager. We facilitated many public meeting groups, whether it was with a contentious development project or an ad hoc water rate committee or a number of different committees. So I've had a lot of experience doing it. I'm confident I can get us through it, but I'm also very, very open and willing to use a facilitator. Sometimes when you use an outside facilitator that may not have the background in what is the topic at hand, I have seen it be a little bit challenging to make forward movements. But with that said, I do understand that there's a lot of distrust within some of the community members. So I think it's important that we remain flexible and if we're really kind of hitting one of those sticky areas, I think we just hire a facilitator to either help us get over that, or just take over the rate.
Thank you.
No problem. Any more public comments before we, oh, here we go. Mr. Linton, please go ahead.
Hi there, thank you all. This seems great so far. I just had one question. What if people would like to engage with, with just a writing comment or engage in that way? I just want to make sure that, you know, with ADA compliance and, and also too with different network speeds, sometimes, you know, just this interface is challenging. So is there a way that people can send written comments?
Yes, you can send written comments via email. Do we have a Zoom chat open?
No.
No, but you know, somebody else was, you know, I was speaking with somebody else who, who said that might be a nice way to be able to, you know, allow people to engage a little bit more, since basically on the Zoom end, it's kind of just a blank screen with the lower, you know, to raise our hand if we want to speak, so.
I do, you know, I have had really good experience with groups utilizing the Zoom chat.
Yeah.
On the other hand, in public meetings, it can go a little bit sideways in that nobody is, there are some members of the Zoom, in the Zoom chat, their expectation is that they're responded to in the Zoom chat or they start kind of this free-for-all thing going on that gets a little bit out of control just from a record keeping. So I would suggest with the next meeting, I think that we should open up the Zoom chat and just try it out. And then if it's, if we collectively decide it's not working, we'll just not use it moving forward. But I do think it's a, it's a good point. It is an easy way for people to ask a really quick question without having to go through this raise your hand process. So I don't have a problem with it. I've seen it get a little wild a couple of times, but I, you know, I think it's worth a chance. I do think it's an easy way to participate.
And it would be easy to have a dedicated person maybe to monitor the chat and bring questions if they come up and be that liaison to the meeting, to the chat.
Yeah, I do, I think, I do think it's worth us figuring it out. So yeah, that's a good comment. Mr. Linton, let us work on it for the next meeting. I do like that.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Director Heck, Mr. Linton, I have one question. Were you, were you asking specifically about Zoom chat or if someone wanted to just submit written comments for the board to be looked at through the process?
Yeah, that's a great point. That's a great point and probably both would be best, you know, for, for people who aren't familiar with this platform or have a good connection. But yeah, I'm sure that there are people who would just like, separate.
Yes, so you, there are a variety of ways to, to issue comments. You can issue comments through the meetings themselves, whether that's by participating verbally or once we get the Zoom chat up and going, you can participate and provide comments, written comments, whether that's by old fashioned snail mail, you can address it directly to myself, or if you would like to send an email, we can also do that.
So what we can do, and we did in the past, have a particular email account that people would send a particular question to and that would be a log of a comment, we would respond to that. So we'll make sure that that email account is put up on the Plan for Water website page on the nidwater.com and people can send an email directly to there so it doesn't get lost in other email occurrences. And so we can have that in advance of typically the next meeting that we have and so we can come with questions, we can post those answers if anybody has a comment so that we keep a running log, sort of similar comments, frequently asked questions, et cetera. But we will, we will post that and make sure that that email account is, is available for everybody in the public.
And then on the, on the next slide, I am going to kind of talk about comment management a little bit. Let's just make sure we're done with the comments on this particular slide before we move on. We have a Richard. Richard, please go ahead. It says, Richard with no last name.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, this is Richard Madison and my question is the, the challenges that occur with Zoom meetings. I, I heard some of your earlier presentation, you're planning on opening up the NID campgrounds and parks in 2022. Is there an anticipated time when you may reinstitute public meetings where we can actually attend and, and have these meetings in person so that we can get a better flavor of how this is proceeding?
Yeah, definitely. So this is a topic that we were planning on bringing up with the board tomorrow, but we can also talk about the context of the Plan for Water. I do agree that kind of voucher planning and trying to have the public engaged remotely can be somewhat challenging. So our current challenge is that the Nevada County Health can be somewhat challenging. So our current challenge is that the Nevada County Health Officer has their own health order that is still into effect. And so essentially, if you cannot meet the six feet of public distancing, then you are required to mask, which would mean that if we didn't have the six feet of distancing, then the board would be required to mask, which makes it almost impossible for the microphones to pick you up so the folks at home can hear you. So we're still struggling a little bit with those challenges. So, you know, I'm open to whatever the board wants to do. This room in particular does pose a challenge because of the size of the room. It would be difficult to allow a meaningful number of the public in here with the staff that is present and the board members. Unless everybody was masked, but we are going to have audio and visual issues if we are masked.
And if we're moving forward, we find that the room packs out, because I'm hoping that the health issue order will be lifted, hopefully, at some point in this 18 months. And we find that there is a lot of people that are interested. Could we have the option of having, holding it in a different venue, larger, or?
We can. And the only challenge is related to a larger venue is we have to rent it, and then we have to kind of move this audio/video system, which is, you know, easier said than done. But we're happy to do that. I think it's going to slow us down. You know, we are, we are hearing, as Mr. Madison stated, that there are people who really do desire to participate in person. There are also people that desire to continue to have the opportunity to participate, whether it's for a health reason, or just for, it's easier for them to participate from home remotely. We are a smaller agency, so we do have some technology limitations and size limitations. As of right now, I would suggest that we see if the Nevada County Health Order changes at all. It'd be difficult, like I said, we would essentially, and we talked through this, because I do have a desire myself to open up the meetings to the public. I know there's people that just would like to attend.
I really do.
I do too.
Yeah. Some of, some of the issues, and we've all talked about those internally staff-wise, it just, you would, you could get to, you know, there's five people in here, and the rest of you can't come in. And so it, you know, then you're kind of picking and choosing. And that is concerning to me. So I think that we continue, my recommendation to the board, will we continue to play it by year until such time the Nevada County Health Officers' masking recommendation is consistent with the CDC recommendation, and then make the change at that time. But I'm certainly open to any direction.
Good.
We're good with that. Okay. So we will continue to have remote meetings, but Mr. Madison, we do hear you, and we'll try, as soon as the health orders modify, we'll move towards having in-person meetings. It, it.
Stuart Feldman.
Mr. Feldman, you're up next. Mr. Feldman, can you?
Hello? Uh-oh. Okay.
You might have two devices on.
Was that our problem? We had two devices on?
Yeah, if you have two devices on, you get feedback.
Lost him.
Are we lost you, Mr. Feldman?
Yeah.
If you, Mr. Feldman, if you still have a comment, just raise your hand, and we'll get to you anytime.
Reason for the chat.
Yes, that is another good reason for the chat.
Agreed.
Problem is, I'm going blind, but to sit closer.
That's why you're going to have a screen.
Any bet. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the next slide. Considering I only have five slides, and Chip has.
Hundred and five.
A hundred and five. I have to continue. So just some quick logistical items, the process check-ins. So we will be kind of doing a process check-in at the beginning and the end of every meeting. I know that is going to kind of be a little rote and annoying, but I think it's beneficial just to keep us on track, and to change something if it's not working for somebody involved.
And there is Mr. Feldman.
And Mr. Feldman's back. Mr. Feldman, go ahead. Stop to unmute yourself.
I am unmuted, and I have a question. On your website, it indicates how to sign up for the email list, and the list link is down at the bottom of the page. And then some screens on some devices don't show that, so that tab, or that, that box. It would be very useful if in the Plan for Water narrative, in the discussion where it says, you know, join the meeting, or join our email list, if that text could also be to sign up for just the Plan for Water email list, it would be much simpler, and it could just be a text link in the discussion on the introduction about the Plan for Water. I think it would be more efficient for signing up to the email if people could get to it more easily.
Yeah, I don't disagree. Let us look into that and see if it's a modification we can make.
Thank you.
All right. So the process check-ins, beginning and end of every meeting, and then comment management. So we are going to be tracking comments received and noting them in a matrix with the response. And then we will be placing that information on the website, so the general public can kind of understand the flavor of the comments that we are getting. The question I want to ask the board is, what is your desire as far as the amount of time we spend reading or summarizing comments we've gotten outside of an actual Plan for Water meeting? Because we do, for example, Mrs. Suarez sent us an email regarding our, the content of our presentation this evening. Now, is this something the board desires to have kind of read out at a meeting, or would you like it just to be kind of tracked in the comments summary? And there's pros and cons to both, right? The pros are that other people get to hear the comment, which can sometimes be helpful to that kind of...
Can't there just be a link?
Yeah, because it can take a long time to go through and read comments.
Yeah, I could say, you know, Ms. Suarez's comments regarding presentation.
We can certainly check.
And then that way, anyone who's interested could go look, and both of us who will want to see that can do that as well.
Okay. I think that's, well, I'm, I'm open.
On the original Plan for Water, there was a page where the actual letters, or like, Ms. Suarez had a letter, and she had a map, and she had, you know, and she had a handbook, and so she had three different things.
Right.
And so on the original Plan for Water, there was where you had actually, you could click and see the actual letter, you could click and see the attachment, and, and so whatever was submitted, in addition to like a summary. So for, for metrics and finding themes and stuff, I think it's very helpful to have.
That's a good point, because people do send us attachments.
Yeah.
That are.
Yeah. And so, but it is good to track and see if there's trends in comments, and so, you know, to, to, so I think we need both.
Yeah, I think that's great. I'm, I'm fine with it. Doesn't matter to me. Whatever, whatever is helpful. Okay, so we will add in, comments will be summarized in a matrix, and then the links to actual documents will be included, so those can be provided as well.
Perfect. And that would be on the Plan for Water webpage?
Yep.
Perfect.
Wonderful.
All right. Before we go past comment management, is there any public comment on planning, comment management? And then one other thing, so we are going to be a little bit loose with accepting of comments. You know, I don't want people to necessarily feel you miss the vote on every comment if you just miss it by a day. That's not really what this exercise is intended to be. With the exception of if we are making comments on specific modeling topics, we are really going to try to set a reasonable due date for the comments, just because it will require a lot of rework to go back and address anything. But in situations like that, we are going to have to agree, once that item comes up, what's that reasonable amount of time? Is that two weeks, three weeks, a month, you know? And I think it'll be dependent on what the actual item is that we're commenting on. But for example, I've, we have put a glossary terms on the website, and we're providing it to the board tonight, and some FAQs through the Plan for Water. You can comment on that anytime you want. It doesn't matter which stage. So we get to the final document, and then you might finally lose your comment, the comment window might close.
As we go along, if we come across a phrase or a term that there's some ambiguity, we can always just add to it throughout the process.
So, so for absolutely, for the glossary of terms, Plan for Water, our process, those things come up whenever you feel like it, or it comes to mind. There might be some things, and we will note those things, and we will talk about it very specifically, those items, if there is a due date, what the reason is. And we'll collectively agree with the board and the public, what's a reasonable amount of time for that particular item, so it's well-understood. Does that sound like a plan? All right. Is there anybody from the public who has a comment on comment management? Okay. And then, as I just stated, we, oh, we do have one.
Matthew Coulter?
Matthew, I'm.
Hessler?
Coulter. Mr. Coulter, would you please go ahead?
Yes, it's 4:54 now, and just, the bugs are kind of just being worked out on the Zoom meeting, and very difficult to hear the first part of the meeting due to the audio problem. And so I'm just hoping that in future meetings, it can be checked ahead of time, so we don't lose like that first 20 minutes. There was really good stuff in there with the recreation report. And as well as the public comment, which this is on, the little hand wasn't working. So I basically logged out, logged back in, and then it worked. So just for other people, in case they, that wasn't working for them.
Sure. Great idea. We could definitely check it ahead of time.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we typically do check it ahead of time. Sometimes I think it doesn't, it has a mind of its own. It has a mind of its own. We will continue to check it ahead of time. Yeah. All right. Good, good. Okay.
Jennifer, I just have a kind of an overarching comment. I just want to say, as part of this, first of all, I'm really excited as a board member to be finally here, y'all, that we've been all talking about this now for a number of years, and I feel really confident and great about the process that our general manager has come up with. I'm thrilled to see such a great amount of public participation. And for those of you who might still harbor a little bit of that distrust or reservation, I would just ask you to look over your shoulder to where we all were three and four years ago, and compare that to where we are today. And I am pretty certain that what we are doing at this very minute would never have even been thought of, conceived of, or done four years ago. So we have a wonderful team in place, a really committed board, a committed general manager, and I'm thrilled to have you all along this journey with us. So thank you.
You're here. Well, well said. Very well said.
All right. If there are no more, and so just to touch on, we did generate some new Plan for Water FAQs that are available on the website. Let's take a look, and if there's something that we just happened to overlook, or that you feel that would be helpful, please reach out, and we can take consideration of your concern or comment, and incorporate it as appropriate. And the same with the glossary of terms. The glossary of terms is on the website. And this, this is also a flexible document. Something comes up as we're moving along, if it's not on there, we can easily add it. It really is not a big deal. We are more than happy to accommodate. So look for those two items to basically be updated on a as-needed basis, just to provide clarification. And then Chris, can you go off to the next slide? And then we are kind of planning this outreach calendar. So the outreach calendar will document what we're planning on doing at what stage, and how we're going to do outreach, and what the community and everybody should expect, and then what we have done. So there will be times where we will go meet with a variety, whether it's myself, other staff members, or members of the board, where we will meet with community groups in some variety of way, and we'll note those things on our calendar. So it'll be kind of a running thing, tally, documentation of what we've done, and what we plan to do. And so if any member of the public has something that they think would be helpful to add to the calendar, you know, we're more than happy to consider it and get it scheduled. And then if, as we start moving along, we will start doing some touch points with the members of the community to determine whether or not there is a method by which they might be engaged, if they're, that they're not. And then I'll kind of turn it over to Greg. He's been working with our new consultant team, who is here to help us also with this effort. So Greg, I don't know if you want to summarize that at all.
Yeah, we're just going to be putting together a whole, Jennifer says, outreach calendar, that's going to be kind of a bunch of communication materials that we anticipate getting to the members of the community. Social media is going to be a big key player in trying to get information, so we want to know where we can meet people on the social media platforms. We've done some surveys in the past, kind of know where people are, what kind of material they look at. We'd like to continue to try to get people's emails, so that we can go straight to email addresses. That's very helpful. That delivers a very key message right away to people's inbox, timely. So we're building that now, anticipate by next month, we'll have sort of an outline, and we're going to be looking at on a three-month cycle. So we'll have like a six-month process, and then we're going to be updating it on a three-month cycle, sort of, you know, rinse and wash, and see how it worked, and we'll be talking about statistics and numbers. And so we'll be bringing those back to you as well, to tell you how many, how many people we touched, who we touched, and what they read, how often people were engaged. So I think those are some key numbers to really try to bring back, and see where we're going to engage in this community, because I think what those, especially in COVID, we're hoping to get to a place where we can pretty much go and meet people at a coffee shop, or do some other things as much as we can. But right now, it's some content, it's some infographics, it's graphic design information, and so trying to help people understand where we are and what we're updating. So look for that. That's coming, and we're engaging with a firm right now.
Great.
Thank you, Greg.
Now, is there any comments before we kind of move off the logistics section from the public? I'm not seeing any there. All right. Well, if you think of something, just interrupt us. All right. So then, just a couple of quick items. We are, Chip will be going over the system overview today, with attendance would be two meetings, but due to the pace we're going at, it might be three meetings. This is being flexible. And, and then we have, go ahead, Chris. So this is basically what we'll be covering today, is our system overview. We're looking kind of from the top of the system to the bottom of the system. And we do, after your patience, as we go through this, it is, our system is extremely complicated and complex due to its size, and also with interconnectivity with other agencies, our hydropower facilities, and then kind of the interface between the upper Water Division and lower Water Division. And then, and the purpose is essentially to ensure we have a common understanding of how the system works. It'd be very difficult to make strategic planning, and kind of come up with our priorities and what our challenges are, without actually understanding our systems in depth.
And Jennifer, is the second meeting intended for the lower division?
Correct. I have a feeling we're sticking into a third meeting.
Well, this is important work.
It's very, well, I think, to have the public see the gravity of the complex system we have, all these little reservoirs all over the place, so.
It is.
Good.
Yeah, it is a very complex system. I'm excited to hear, I, unfortunately, staff will tell you, I have to have them go over parts of the system once in quite often. It is extremely complex. So I, I think it was Ken who actually gave me my first topo map that I still have in my office that, use it, if, you can tell it's all folded and bent up, because I pull it back out on the table quite often. And then Chris, next slide, please. And then we, I talked about this earlier, we're nine stages, 18, 19 months. We hope to work through these challenging issues, and all still be friends at the end, and come out with some good public policy. So that's our main goal. Does anybody in the public have any questions before we kind of move off the stages? And, you know, this is, this is flexible. If some part of this needs more time, or less time, or we need a new stage, you know, we can do that. That's, that's easy. We're flexible, and we can do that. Does anybody have any questions before we kind of move on?
One, Ms. Flores?
Ms. Flores, please unmute yourself.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
You sure can.
Oh, thank you so much, General Manager, and thank you, and good afternoon to the board. I really appreciate you putting watershed at the top of your system. Today, we will be looking at the NID infrastructure. This infrastructure has been placed onto a much larger natural system called the functioning watershed. In order to understand integrated water management, the larger water cycle, and how watersheds produce water, a much larger vision is required. This is the underlying system from which NID takes its abundance of water. Maintaining the larger environmental system creates the water supply and ensures resilience and sustainability. We all may have an understanding of the water cycle, where the onshore movement of wind collects water from the ocean through evaporation, and brings it onto the landscape through precipitation. This water serves to sustain life upon the landscape, until ultimately returning to the ocean, completing the water cycle. One can view a watershed as an enormous precipitation collecting and routing device. But natural transportation and storage of water actually involves a complicated mix of many smaller processes. Even before precipitation reaches the ground, it interacts with vegetation. Trees and other vegetation are responsible for interception and detention of some of the rainfall, leading to some evaporation, and also slowing the amount reaching the ground via throughfall, and giving it time for better infiltration to groundwater. Saturation of soils occurring when precipitation exceeds infiltration leads to overland flow and over longer timeframe streams and rivers. In other words, the groundwater creates and supplies the surface water. Seeing water in relationship to the entire landscape provides deeper understanding and an ability to see how respecting these systems enable the stewardship mission of the district. Proper focus on a systems-level vision and total water budget, including groundwater, will offer a wider view of all the elements affecting NID and its future ability to work with natural processes for truly integrated water management. Unless NID, well, I hope NID includes a detailed view of watershed function. The overview of, otherwise, it will be deficient. You know, we need to look at the watershed. You need to start at the beginning, the watershed, and I'm so happy that you put it at the top of the list there, because I really think it's important. And we need to understand that all these processes are interconnected. NID needs to learn about, understand, and give a presentation about the natural infrastructure system of the functioning watersheds. This is where integrated water management begins. And thank you. Have a, I mean, it's a great thing so far.
All right. Thank you, Diana. Mr. Linton?
Hi, you know, I was just wondering, and maybe this is an easy answer, but, you know, I'm looking at the list of stages that you have there, and I guess I was just wondering, is there one of those that kind of encapsulates trying to create a vision of the goals of the community? And, and, and kind of the reason that I say that is, I'm just wondering, like, is the goal of the Plan for Water to produce something that is more in alignment with NID's list of district goals? And, and the reason I bring this up is because, you know, District Goal Number Three, developing and managing our resources in a self-determining manner protects and provides for local control of our community's most valuable assets. You know, I just think that we need to just look at, you know, maybe zoom out just a little bit to see if there are other things that we need to, you know, bring into consideration, like things like ethics, and cooperating with other agencies, and other, and other water districts, and other things like using a scientific-based method. You know, I just think that, you know, it's concerning to me, you know, if we're kind of going along with the vision of NID's, you know, goals in a self-determining manner. I think that we're going to continue to, you know, produce decisions that don't work well for other water agencies around us. Case in point being Centennial Dam. So, thank you very much.
I think that's a good comment, Mr. Linton. So Stage Three is intended for the board to go through a process of essentially doing the strategic planning. So the idea is that in Stage Three, they will either come up with a new mission, vision, and kind of strategic priorities, or affirm one or none of the ones we currently have. And then at some point, those will be pulled out as a standalone document that would then be flushed into actionable items on an annual basis. That would kind of tee into our budgetary process. But it certainly is planned for to be visited in that Stage Three timeframe.
You know, I just, I guess I wonder, you know, like, is, should, should creating our vision for our goal of this whole process come before going to the specifics, like water rights overview? And, and kind of the reason that I say that is, like, if we look at water rights, you know, up until now, you know, NID, you know, under prior management, was really looking at all of the water that leaves NID's service boundary as wasted water. And, and, and we know that it's not. We know that it goes to South Sutter Water District. But because they had that management style, they were seeing what was measured as excess, you know, uncaught water as wasted water. And then that was why they paid to be part of, you know, a major plan, looking at how Centennial Reservoir Project can send water all the way down through Southern California, because they could capture that wasted water, and then, and then send that above Camp Far West Reservoir, and above South Sutter Water District. So, I don't know, I just almost feel like, you know, looking at our community's ethics kind of would maybe change the way in which we would view our water rights.
Okay. So I think the intent of Stage One and Stage Two is just factual based. It is, this is what we have, not necessarily how it should be used for your priority or use. It is simply, this is what we have. So then the board can go into that larger discussion, that your indicating would be important.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Wallace, please go ahead. To unmute yourself. Star Six?
Homakani. Annie Yepany. And I'm here with my brother Brian Wallace.
Homakani, Nisnanamany, Yepany. We just, real quick, I wanted to kind of get a fix on how we are able to get involved in this process with regards to what Mr. Litten kind of did, touched on some of the things we were interested in. And that was vision and direction, and the larger picture of biodiversity and the cultural community that you're working with. So is this the time to bring up, like, our perspectives? Or later in, you know, because the way it's staged out, and we're looking at, like, you know, this framework, and this, these models and whatnot, and kind of in our experience, science reasoning-based decision-making, sometimes is data-driven, science-driven, and modeling kind of has a ideological bias, and then toward finding universal principles with regards to like native biological taxonomies, you know, how we categorize and classify knowledge, you know, in insect biosystems or whatnot. Sometimes it's sufficient enough for people to kind of over-rely on these simplified universal principles, kind of at the risk of ignoring the very essence of the biodiversity we're trying to save itself. And so where, I guess where we're at right now is trying to figure out how we can kind of begin to talk about vision, and a, and what we can do to help explore more, or your work here, to arrive at a more informed and resilient vision, and, and plan. And, and so I guess, to stop, I mean, we're just, is this, would this be the point where we would like to talk about our role and the indigenous perspective of biodiversity and watershed, habitat wellness, and, and, and trying to help enrich and inform this process? Or are we going to have, like, say, strategic planning and have to fit, you know, all of this into that?
The strategic planning stages, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be three, four-meeting process. And frankly, as long as it needs to be for the board to gain some comfort level with where we're at. As we're going through the system overview, if we are missing a specific piece of information that is not in that kind of question of ethical realm, that is more of a factual biodiversity fact, or how the watershed functions, then we would certainly bring it up. One of the things I've heard a couple of times from Ms. Flores, Mr. Linton, and now from Mr. Wallace, is that there does seem to be some desire to possibly move the stages around and do strategic planning, so that you could have this kind of overall, you know, conversation about what are we, and what are our ethics, before you go into Stages One and Two. Stages One and Two were simply meant to be factual stages, so we can all kind of have a common understanding of our actual infrastructure, because it can be complex. But I can see the benefit of moving strategic planning up that is somewhat the board's desire, if you'd like to do that. I do want to note that that was told us back in our schedule, that we would be kind of hitting a pause button. You know, this, we have presented this process as it's laid out a couple of times, and I've not heard that feedback to date. But I am open to doing that, you know, what's the desire of the board?
Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah. We need to know, we need to get a foundation. We need to have a basis. And then, number three, strategic planning, bring it all in and talk about it. But let's, let's find out what we're talking about first. So everybody has a common knowledge, a foundation of what NID is. I think a lot of the community doesn't have that foundation, a basis, and they're going to need that to engage in strategic planning. So I think we'd be leaving a good portion of the community back. You know, we'd just lose them.
Director Hall?
I'm wondering if we could add a specific conversation after water rights on the watershed. I do think that's a really important issue, that is not only factual and background, but also has the integration of understanding the watershed's role with our water quality, forest health, all of those things. I think, I think that is a worthwhile conversation to have, and it would kind of dovetail into strategic planning nicely. Anyway, that's what I would.
How does that tie in with hydrology and hydro, how do you say the word?
Hydrology.
I struggle with that word, too.
Because it seems like that would be a place, and moving that one up, and combining it with the.
That's more quantitative, is the, yeah, the health and how the watershed function. I think we could add in a phase, I think we need to figure out if we have that ability, or how much information we have on staff level.
I think we've got quite a bit. I mean, we can bring something together, we can, let us, I think it's a good idea. We should be able to go back and talk about that.
I think so. Let's do a tentative, let's add a stage in, if that's a head nod from everyone.
I would agree.
Yeah, I don't think it wouldn't be helpful, especially because I, now I've been talking for an hour and a half, and Chip hasn't started. We are, you know, the Plan for Water is intended to tear into a watershed management plan. So, you know, it kind of goes back to that same theory. How can you figure out how to manage it if you don't know what you have to do?
I agree with Rich. I think that it would be helpful to have this basic foundation of, of our water rights, and our plumbing, if you will, you know, just simply stated. For the other, you know, there's a lot of folks, like Mr. Linton is one for certain, and, and others that kind of already know a lot about that. And there's an awful lot of folks that don't.
Right.
And so, Mr. Linton, I hope you will indulge me, but I really feel like having the water rights overview and the watershed, you know, all of that, the plumbing and the water rights is our foundation. And then, once we have that in place, then to move forward. And I really love the idea of adding the watershed phase or stage.
I do hear one other point, though, that Mr. Wallace made, which was the cultural science that we have. And I do think that that's an important part to integrate at some point, and to recognize that that's part of the, part of what we need to protect. And that we're responsible for.
Where would that be, would that be in your, what you're thinking about? Because I agree 100%. We need to be able to recognize the native folks and their rule and of our watershed. Where would that come? Do you guys, I don't know.
Director Peters would like to talk.
I think, and I agree, I agree with all of it. I think that the, what I heard from, from the Wallaces is that we need to incorporate that in our vision and values of what do we want our district to be? And how, how are we going to operate it? Is it going to be just the watershed gives and we take? Or, you know, we have to nurture the watershed, and we have to adopt it culturally, as Karen mentioned. And so I think that, I would ask the Wallaces, do you think that it would be helpful to have a watershed meeting ahead of the strategic plan? I think that's a good idea, myself, but how does that ring with you, with you two, Annie and Brian?
Mr. Wallace, do you have any input on whether or not you feel that we can address some of your comments, and Mr. Linton's comments, as well as Ms. Flores' comments, in kind of this new Stage Three? That would be more of watershed health, cultural resources, kind of that overarching protection of the health and sustainability of the watershed?
Hello? Okay. Well, yes, sir. Appreciate the discussion on it. And I want to say that we really appreciate all the work that's led up to this in the prior iterations, and, you know, getting this far, and what you're doing with us now. So we're, we're very open and thankful for that. To answer your question, I just want to say, like, yes, and then, but, like, this, this growing efforts among like tribal indigenous communities to direct projects that restore habitats, you know, for declining species, and resuscitate lost practices and knowledges at the same time, that benefits everybody. And it's just not necessarily, this vision applies to just indigenous cultures, but also feeds the richness of other cultures, and even non-native land cultures that same, that share all these same spaces that, that are all the stakeholders here, that love this place, as I think as much as all of us do. And so like, there's, there's a great value that this, that the knowledge that's embedded in this, this, this native taxonomy, for lack of a better word, is, you know, because this will give us more of a sophisticated input, and kind of grasp of the changes in biodiversity through space and time of this area, and that that it really provides just different ways of perceiving, and cataloging this biodiversity that we want to work with here, this, this system, and leads, I think, more to, more collaboration and respectable learning of cultures. So, yeah, I get, we'll, we'll fit in wherever it can fit in, but we certainly like to engage throughout the whole process. But it's just like, the overarching priority for us is that to understand that, you know, we're here as native people, as members of this, Lizzie Enos Nisnan Family Foundation, that, and, and Nisnan people from Kumunseu, that you just want to really explore, and how we do it in this process, but the promise of, you know, biocultural restoration, and, and this living cultural and biological diversity of the bear, the American, and Uba River bio-regions, and, and really give us an opportunity to celebrate the values and knowledge of some of the most distinctive cultural practices in one of the most distinctive biological places on earth, and that we're lucky to live and share here. And so, I'm sorry if I took, that was a long answer, but yes, I guess, is, you know, wherever you can fit it in, watershed thing, I think, great, there's a lot to talk about. But, and we'll do our best to make sure that we're, you know, we respond intelligently and help inform this process as best we can.
How about this? So, I think we're. So, I think we all collectively agree this new stage is great. I think that on staff, we have a lot of information regarding parts of it. I don't think we're going to quite be able to dive as deep into some of the conversation that Mr. Wallace is referencing, but, Mr. Wallace, if, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to maybe set up an offline meeting with you so that I can talk to you a little bit more about your vision and possibly good resources, because, you know, the, the great thing about this process is we could also have outside people come present to us that, you know, that can supplement our information. That's totally fine. So, why don't, Mr., oh, go ahead, I just say, if we could talk offline, I think that between Greg Jones and myself and some input from you and maybe some others, we could flush that particular stage out a little bit more. Does that sound reasonable, Mr. Wallace?
We would love to, and thank you. And then, we're, we're just formed, which are trying to be an interpretive community that advises and forms and tries to provide for some support and constructive leadership to help, you know, this process. And so, we're totally open to like a one-on-one meeting. We found Representative Peters to very, be a very accessible and a good, a good representative.
Right. So, um, we will get your contact information, you, okay, yeah, I'll get your contact information, and then I'll reach out, and we'll just set up a meeting, I think you'd be very helpful for our new stage. So we now have 10 stages. Anybody, we have another question.
Stuart Feldman?
Mr. Feldman, go ahead.
Do you have time to your hand?
Mr. Feldman here, would you like to make a comment? You're unmuted.
Hold on a second. Oh, I have my.
When you're ready, Mr. Feldman, just go ahead and unmute.
Okay, I have unmuted. Let me, okay, put that away. My question has to, okay. Excuse me, I am on two devices.
I'm having to mute one of your devices. Go ahead and unmute yourself when you have your second device unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Sounds perfect.
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
Hello? Can you hear me now?
You sound perfect, Mr. Feldman, please go ahead.
What I'm going to ask is, on stages four possibly and five, historically, NID has done some environmental studies of the hydrology, hydrography, hydrography, and other things that are related to the preparation for environmental documents for the Centennial Project. Will those be released to the public so they can be reviewed in, prior to those stages being discussed? Or is there more material about the science that we need to know?
Well, so, one of the issues is, and I wasn't here when the draft environmental document was done, I don't know that they were completed.
No.
It's not completed. So, part of, part of the challenge is this particular process is not in regard specifically to Centennial, it's in regard to the whole system, so not all of the information would be relative, you know, the Centennial Project was very focused on the bear, and this is all encompassing. So let me, we will go through and look at what documentation we have available that could be released for supplementing this process. I just don't know how relative the Centennial draft documents would be. I don't know that they were ever reviewed or, you know, I'm just not sure, I've, I have never looked at them.
What about the FERC documentation? Is there material in there that could be shared for discussion and?
There's definitely, it's online. Yeah, the FERC information is on our website, is that correct?
There's a link from our website.
There's a link from our website to the FERC documentation, and that would be very helpful. You know, what we can do is, we can put out a Plan for Water email blast that provides some of those direct links if you're interested in doing some background research.
That is perfect. Thank you very much.
All right. So before we move on, are there any more modifications we'd like to make to the stages?
I like this new modification.
I think it's great.
It's great.
Okay.
Before we move on, we'll have a brief break.
Well, that's, I have one more slide.
Oh, you do? Yeah. Gee, how many do you have? He has 100, you have 200?
I only have five, and he has 105.
He's going to go much faster than you do.
I have 50 different days.
So, the Plan for Water will then be used to kind of peer into the raw water master plan, the treated water ma, water master plan, the watershed management plan, the system operation plan.
Wow, real quick.
And those will then be utilized to inform our annual capital program and how we operate our system. So now that far we go on, it is, let's just do a time check, it is site 30, we told ourselves we'd be done by six, Chip has 105 slides.
Take your time.
So, my, my, my question is, is do we want to embark on this next part and move into the system overview, or do we want to start that fresh at the next meeting? What's the desire?
Embark.
Just go and.
Embark.
Yes.
Okay.
Let's get as far as we can, and then do a hard stop at six, or, you know, do, somebody do a five-minute time check and.
I could do that.
I thought maybe.
And I, I would just add, I think there's going to be logical breaks, and if, if we're approaching that time, I think, Chip, you can say, call it, or I need five more minutes or 10 more minutes to get to the logical break.
Fair enough. I'm thinking that if we may get through the Middle Yuba River watershed, that's probably a good time to.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. So now, does the board desire a small break?
The board has taken a small break.
The president just crossed the facilitator, and we'll be taking a break.
Do their screen.
Oh, thank you.
This is probably an hour.
Okay.
Okay, we're back in.
I think we're back in, and we are ready for Mr. Close to start with his presentation.
Whoa.
Thanks, Mr. Close.
Please, I did it, right. All right.
Nicely done.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Chip Close, the Water Operations Manager, and had this whole written-out speech about all these things we were going to cover, and we already covered them all, as far as ground rules, so that takes a little time. But essentially, the thing I wanted to highlight is, there are a lot of slides here, there's a lot of complexity to what NID does. So with that being said, please feel free to ask questions as we go through the, go through all of our facilities and how they interconnect. We certainly have a lot of senior staff here to help answering those questions as they come up, including Keon Summers, our Hydroelectric Manager, we have Monica Ray, our Recreation Manager, we have Ford Arson, our Water Resources Manager, and then myself, so.
You forgot Doug.
I'm Doug, our engineer.
I'm Doug.
And thanks to all of them for helping look the slides together. So that was this slide, we just motor through that one. We're down to 104. Okay. So historically, NID lands have been divided by watershed and collection service area, watershed collection and service area. Our watershed area is generally known as NID's Mountain Division, and that's operated and maintained by NID's Hydroelectric Division. It's represented by the picture on the left, the beautiful high mountain reservoirs and watershed. On the right-hand side, we have our service area, and these are the lands where NID conveys its water delivery for consumptive uses, for drinking, for irrigation, all of those types of uses. And that side of NID is operated and maintained by NID's Water Division. Now, the best representation of this is this map kind of shows you that delineation. If you look at the yellow shaded area, that represents NID's Water Service Area. This is the area that basically all of our water rights say we're going to utilize the water we capture in the high mountain elevation, send it down the hill and further to the customers within this yellow shaded area.
Chip, are all of our water rights in the upper, upper watershed? Do we have water rights down in the service area as well?
Yes, great question, and yes, we have them throughout. However, for today's discussion, we're going to be focusing more on the upper watershed and the red, and we'll talk about those water rights up there a little bit today, but more so when we get to the water rights topic workshop. But yes, we have water rights throughout the entire district area. So again, on the right-hand side of that map, the area in red shade, that is the watershed collection area, and that's where it would be holding me on all night. So, as I mentioned, the two halves of NID, the watershed land, basically encompasses 70,000 acres, in which we collect runoff and snow melt. For the most part, the lands that we own up in this area were purchased when NID was just becoming NID, and it was purchased at a time when hydroelectric, or hydraulic mining was coming to an end, and so our forefathers at NID reached out to all of those folks and purchased a bunch of very old and senior water rights. And we'll go into those a little bit further at another workshop. The area entails nine storage reservoirs for 270,000 acre feet of total volume. It entails 24.4 miles of canal, flume, and tunnel. It has seven powerhouses for a total generation of 82.2 megawatts available. Includes 19 campgrounds and dispersed camping that supports roughly 300,000 annual visitors, and we heard a lot about that today. It's a very unique thing, and, and very good that NID can offer that. Now, the column on the right discusses a little bit about the service area, it has 287,000 acres of land that we irrigate or has the potential to be irrigated by our water rights. As I mentioned, it is the area of consumptive use. It entails 500 miles of canal, roughly 6,500 raw water customers, six NID water treatment plants, and I have to add that it actually supports two more, the city of Grass Valley and the city of Nevada City, so you could actually say it supports eight water treatment plants. Roughly 400 miles of treated water pipe, 19,600-plus treated water customers, and all in all, it utilizes roughly 150,000 acre feet a year for consumptive use. And we will cover the service area in greater, greater detail at the next workshop. Moving on.
Chip, can you just tell us how many acres we own in the watershed and in the service area?
So, service, as far as NID-owned lands, I don't have that off the top of my head, there's certain, certain some we can get to. Basically, most of the reservoirs in the upper watershed, that we own the land underneath the water.
Okay.
And then there's some outlying lands that we own as well up there. We're going to go into a little bit of that here in just a second. Okay, so here is kind of an overview of the mountains and our watershed lands. Basically, it's two main watersheds we're going to focus on tonight. It's the Middle Yuba River System and watershed, and the South Yuba River System and watershed. And to a lesser extent, as we move through this, and we will eventually be talking about the Deer Creek watershed and the Bear River watershed. But for now, for tonight, we're going to start up here in the upper reaches of the Middle Yuba River, so we're going to start up here at English Meadows, and just kind of help you get your bearing, if you follow the Middle Yuba River on down, past Milton, it flows on down all the way down to here, this is our house diversion, and that's the Yuba County Water, or Yuba Water Agency diversion point. If you follow that on down, it goes on into Inglebrook, down at the Yuba River into Marysville to the Feather River, and then eventually into the Sett. So that kind of gives you the background of the connectivity of the system and where the Middle Yuba River system lies with regard to the general delta. So what I'd like to do.
Chip, of all three of the Yuba Rivers, the North, Middle, and South, which has the most flow in it? Which is the?
That is a great question, and I don't know the data for the North Fork. I'm sure we have studied that through the FERC license, something we can look into more.
Oh, okay. That was just curiosity.
It's going to be the North and the South, South's a big watershed, so is the North, the Middle's smaller, probably, so a lot of PGE and then Yuba County Water.
Okay, thank you.
We can probably get some more numbers for that. All right, we'll go ahead and start.
Okay, that's fine.
Basically, you see here on the map, the area circled in red is the head of the Middle Yuba River, and so, as Paul mentioned, really, it's not a giant watershed on the Middle Yuba, and it starts right there at English Meadows, not very long. And you may wonder why the heck we're talking about English Meadows when NID really doesn't have any facilities in there, and the, the truth of the answer is, well, we own the land and the water rights. So as I mentioned earlier, when NID was being formed, our forefathers went out and shopped for water rights. One of the ones that was available was English Meadows, and when we purchased that, it came with the land and the water rights. It was at one time a reservoir in 1857, and it was constructed for, to support hydraulic mining. Unfortunately, in 1883, someone blew up the dam, which led to a torrent of water going down the Middle Yuba River and flooded Marysville. And that led to the Sawyer Decision in 1884, which put a ban on a hydraulic mine. So, kind of an interesting tidbit for you all. And I look at that picture of the dam, and it, quite frankly, scares me.
How does that thing hold up?
Yeah, it's kind of crazy. Okay, so the next slide here is just kind of a picture of what English Meadows is today. Again, we purchased the land and the water rights, and NID continues to maintain and improve the meadow, not only for water supply, but for environmental benefit, and that's actually that watershed discussion that was brought up tonight. This is the integral piece of what NID does and what we need to do for the lands we own.
And this is where our meadow restoration part is to that.
Right. That was nice to see, naturally. I can't wait to see it.
This is, since I was just noting that English Meadows, the slide Chip is on, is the location of the project that we recently just received a grant for that is moving forward. We're going to do restoration within the meadow and within the channel as well, correct?
That's right. It's restoring the, it's restoring the legacy channel of that English meadow, rebuilding the foundation of the Sett system. Flow and flow, letting water soak in. Yes.
And it'll be following process-based restoration techniques, which is super cool.
Yeah, they'll be using the native material harvested from the sites for the restoration within the channel, and didn't they just recently discover some native beavers, or beavers that lived there?
Yeah, I found a couple native folks hanging out in there, little beavers making the dams, so that's good and happy. But yeah, they're going to use some of the encroachment trees, some of the lodgels, I think, that are approaching, that like the wet, and so, we'll be harvesting those, using those to help restore the channel, and I think we've received 1.7 million from the five, I'm, conservation board. Conservation Board, thank you. So we're really happy about that, and yes, it is the headwaters of the Middle Fork of the Yuba.
And remember, members of the public, if you want to chime in or have any questions, we're going to, please raise your hand, and you don't have to wait for, for a specific time. All right.
Next slide.
Oh, I may raise my hand.
Okay.
George Olins?
Mr. Olins, please go ahead.
Yeah, just curious, when you finish the meadow restoration, will that channelized stream run through it, or will the water spread through, throughout the meadow?
Yeah, the idea is for the water to spread throughout the meadow. Right now, that channelization has cut some pretty deep 15-foot banks within that meadow, and so the idea is to bring that ground table back to its natural flow and re-flood that meadow as it used to.
Thank you.
And George, I think on our projects, on our, our NID website, there is a whole project piece devoted to English Meadow restoration, and this board approved the budget and approved the grant, and I believe work got started, was that early this fall?
This fall, yeah.
Yeah, just this fall. So if you want more information, it's, it's a wonderful project, and we do have that information on our website.
Look, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
So, moving on down the Middle Fork of the Yuba River, we flow into Jackson Meadows. Very beautiful place, obviously. Jackson Meadows Reservoir is an in-stream reservoir on the Middle Yuba River, and basically, for those of you that haven't heard that term before, an in-stream reservoir basically means that the dam was placed across the creek or the channel and backs water up within the channel. An off-stream reservoir is one where you would divert the water out of the creek and put it in a put it in another location to store it or pump it out. Just for reference, we will use off-stream that term in a later slide. Essentially, Jackson Meadows, though, was constructed in 1964-65. It's a urban rock-filled dam. It has a capacity of 69,205 acre-feet. It has a minimum pool in the summer months of 21,000 acre-feet, but we generally don't run it below that. We can't, as part of our Fish and Wildlife agreement. That minimum pool number actually drops in the winter months between 3,000 and 1,000 acre-feet, depending on the year type we're having. But I can tell you, because the watershed is fairly small up there, we don't generally drop this reservoir that low. It's hard to refill. There's no other access to water to fill. So, generally speaking, we keep it around 30,000 to 35,000 acre-feet at the end of irrigation.
I was surprised to read that. Can you give us some detail of what the purpose of that requirement is?
So that stems from back in the development of the Uba Bear project and the agreements we came up with between us and Fish and Wildlife and through the FERC process. And it's one of the environmental conditions that they placed on the reservoir. And if anybody knows specifically what the condition is, I think it's for the fisheries of the facility, more than anything else. But we can look into those details. I can tell you that moving forward, those conditions are going to change with the new FERC license. For instance, Jackson Meadows is a strange reservoir that per our regulations, we're only allowed two ups and two downs per season.
What does that mean?
Per year, actually. So that makes operation of the facility very, very difficult.
Did you explain two ups and two downs?
So, essentially, we manage flow through that reservoir. Once we are past the winter flows where there's no uncontrolled spills, we then set a flow rate out of that reservoir. We're only allowed to set that flow rate for two ups and two downs throughout the year. So in other words, we can only regulate two ups and two downs. We can't change the flow in the...
So you can't change it. So an other down would be changing the flow.
That is correct.
The outflow.
The outflow of the reservoir, correct. That does change with the new FERC license. It comes with some different flows and some ramping rates and whatnot, and we can get into the details in that, but it's really in the weeds. Just knowing that we have operational conditions up there that we abide by, and those are some of them.
So that's a consideration when we talk about how many acre-feet we actually can have to use any one time, right?
Yes, correct. That's a great point. Although the reservoir itself is 69,000 acre-feet, when you're limited to only going down to 20,000 acre-feet by the end of September, that means you really can't touch that volume in the middle of summer. But as a general practice, as I mentioned, we don't usually go that low anyways, just too doggone hard to fill. So, the facility itself, as I already mentioned, already has a environmental in-stream flow requirement, where we're required to push five CFS into the Middle Uba River at all times. The new FERC license wasn't renewed. That number will change, anywhere between 11 to 120 CFS, depending on the year type and the months of the year we're in. And we have those details, and we can provide those. They're also in the FERC document that hopefully we'll be providing on the... There is no power generation on this facility. Can we put a next slide? This is a picture of the dam, and you can see the rock dam there, but a little water you see to the left of the dam here, that is the low-level outlet. And you can see there's quite a bit ahead there and an opportunity to generate some power. And unfortunately, it's been looked into, and the determination is that to get power lines all the way out there is just not feasible. And so, it's not a power generating facility at this point in time.
Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments prior to moving off of Jackson Meadows?
I have a question, too.
I have a question.
Mr. Brown? Ms. Brown, go ahead. You're unmuted. Ms. Brown, do you have a comment? Question? All right, we can't hear you. So, go ahead and ring raise your hand if you do actually have a comment or question that was in the state. All right, Director Hall?
I'm wondering if we're going to talk about the flow requirements, the environmental flow requirements at some point. I'm not suggesting we go into it now, but I would like to better understand the current requirement and the future requirement, and how, kind of, I'd like to better understand the process of how the flows are going to be released under the FERC license, and, you know, a lot of different questions. So, I don't expect to go that way now, but...
Yes, great point, great question. We will definitely have to do that through part of the demand analysis. And we can certainly provide the spreadsheets that detail what is required with the new FERC license, should it be accepted and go through, and it gives you the details for each facility, each month, each water year type.
Okay.
And we're going to have to, part of the need of the environment, the need of NID to supply the environment, and part of our...
Right.
Chip, just to clarify, the low-level outlet, is the purpose of that low-level outlet to release sediment from the dam? Or what's the purpose of the low-level?
It's actually how we provide water down into, down into the middle fork of the river.
Oh, okay. That's a five CFS.
Go ahead. Well, that's probably a demand flow that you're seeing there in the summertime, sort of.
Oh, okay.
Much greater than five CFS.
Yeah, that's what I'd look like a lot.
Yeah, what you don't see in this picture is the right-hand, bottom right-hand side is where the spill gates are located. And that's the only other way to let water out of this facility, but obviously, the water elevation has to be very high, and the gates have to be...
And you can visit that.
Yes.
It is really amazing.
It is.
It really is amazing to see that flow coming out, and it makes you think your lucky stars were part of NID, is all I can say.
Well, I will also say that this is one of those reservoirs where access is actually fairly easy. Nice paved road, access from trucking is fairly quick. And I think that's why recreation is so popular at this facility, where we have our nine campgrounds that support roughly 30,000 visitors annually. It's just a very nice place.
Yeah, it really is.
All right, so I think we have a hand raised, Ms. Sheen, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Tracy Sheen. Hi, Tracy Sheen, Foothills Water Network. Thank you, Director Hall, for your comment. I wanted to see if the board and NID would be interested in reserving some time in a workshop to talk about the FERC licensing, especially the environmental flows. I know a lot of questions have come up in past meetings about the science behind the flows, the reasons why the flows exist. There are questions about how the flows are actually measured, what are included in the flows. And as part of one of the organizations or NGOs that was involved in that multi-year stakeholder and collaborative process, that NID was also involved in and invested lots of times, staff time and money, and I think I would recommend and urge the board and staff to consider the possibility of putting some workshop time into it to have an understanding of it. And it couldn't come at a better time, because, of course, this license will be implemented in the near future, even though we don't know when. But it would be a good time to actually look forward at that. So, just a suggestion.
So currently, we are planning on touching on that topic.
You agree with you?
Yeah, no, I think we currently have actually...
I thought I saw it in one of the pages.
So, we were going to do it, which, oh, here it is.
The man.
All right, so we were currently, originally, looking at really diving into that in stage six. So I guess the question to staff and to everybody else, to board and to talk about, is that appropriate? I think one of the hard parts is that there are more than just FERC flows that we're starting to have to give consideration to, and some of them aren't well-defined, so those need to be talked about. I would recommend we leave it in stage six. I think that you need to understand it in the context of everything else. But, you know, I'm open to discussion about, that's just where we currently had it planned.
Well, if we had it there, we could expand on it at that time with perhaps the information that Tracy has, because she's an actual participant in that.
Yeah, for sure. We could definitely have, you know, just a whole workshop on it, really. I mean, it is pretty comprehensive.
Yes.
I would really support that, I too. The topic is very complicated. I think it creates a lot of misunderstanding within the community as to why do we have these? And it seems, for some, it seems outrageous, for others, it seems...
Not enough.
Yeah, even not enough. And so I think it's, just for having clarity around the topic, it would really help.
I agree.
So, I certainly think we should have a conversation about, there's also potential voluntary agreement flows, as well as any potential unimpaired flow standards that we included in the basin plan amendments. So we should definitely talk about those inclusively so that we can make sure, from my perspective, you know, I don't look at them in the past. I do look at them as something we do have to account for.
Absolutely.
Right.
So, I think we need to talk about all of those requirements and work through kind of some of the science behind it. Some things are still unknown, because of the current regulatory state of the state of California, and what is going on with our FERC licensing, the status of the voluntary agreements, as well as the status of the basin plan amendment. So, we will hit on all of those topics in stage six as planned.
Leave where they are.
Yeah.
And we'll circle...
Does that work for you, Tracy? We're going to leave, we are going to touch on it, but we're going to leave it where we had originally planned on stage six.
And I would support that we have someone that was actually at those meetings to maybe collaborate, come in and talk to us about it. I think that's a good idea.
I think that works, and I would like to thank you, Director Peters, for your suggestion. We would like to talk more about how you would like to have it presented and what information you'd like to hear and learn about. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Lynton, please go ahead.
You know, I just had a really quick question. I was just going to mention that flow, you know, since there is a large flow coming out of Jackson Meadows, a lot of that is above the Milton, well, that's above the Milton-Bowman Canal, which then goes to Bowman, and then there's the Bowman-Spalding Canal, which then takes it to Spalding. And then from there, you know, it could either go down the South Canal during, you know, down to where most of us are, you know, Grass Valley, Nevada City, but it could also go through the Drum Canal and then get farther over through, you know, Bear Uba, Bear River watershed. So I was just mentioning that that's part of the reason that we do see quite a good flow that does come out of there, but only have the five CFS for fish passage. So, a lot of that does get moved around throughout the watershed a bit.
Yeah, thanks for that comment, Mr. Lynton. I think that's why discussing in-stream flows is a great topic to cover, because there's many locations where we pass an in-stream flow. Jackson Meadows is one of them. We put the water into the Middle Uba River only to capture it below at Milton and re-divert it once again. So, the in-stream flow at Jackson Meadows doesn't necessarily take away from the district's overall water pool, because we reutilize it down below. Now, there are a number of other locations, such as below Milton, where we have an in-stream flow release requirement, where we put water down the Middle Uba River that is not recapturable to NID. So, I think it's a worthwhile discussion to discuss each one of those points and the operations behind each one, and how they affect NID and our overall water and our demand.
That would be great.
It's a very valid, really, I think that's great.
Yeah.
So Chip, how are you feeling? Should we, do you have a good stopping place, or we're...
Yeah, we can start at Milton. Time around 3:5.
Okay, so, you know, we're hitting, our time comes quickly, especially when I spend 10 minutes of my, of my side slide.
But the process was important.
It was, I appreciate it.
So how do we, just kind of going back, so we have our stopping point at Milton, we will pick back up with Milton. We've got some really good feedback. How did we feel about the process so far?
I feel great.
Continue.
Now, is there any member of the public giving feedback on the process, maybe things we should consider outside of those that we have already discussed? Anyone have any comments? Jump in. Mr. Feldman, please go ahead.
Just a quick comment, I want to thank you for being so open and responsive to the public, and I think this is moving along very, very well. Thank you again.
No, you're welcome. That's the outcome we desire.
Worth the wait.
Anybody else? All right, so we have good stopping points. Anything the board would like to change? So how about the time of the day? Does this work well with the public? Does this work well with the board? Is there any feedback? We're kind of shooting for a start time of that 3 o'clock for normal workshop plan for water at 4, but that does put us in the evening hours. Whatever the board desires.
This is fine for me.
I think it's, I think it's fine, I think it's necessary for the public.
Later in the day.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's great.
So, it's like a plan, and I'm worried, have some, you know, I've noted quite a few action items. I do have noted some spoken script meetings that we're going to have, one with Mr. Wallace, as well as, and she and I will continue to work together offline on a variety of issues.
So great.
Yeah, no, it's perfect. And I think that's it, and then next time, we'll let Chip have the, all the glory, I won't talk as much.
And do we have a date?
Yeah, do we need to have a...
A date?
Yes, we have another date, and I think that I, did I not put it in my meeting? Yes. December 7.
December 7.
Now, we don't have a date between now and then, that's kind of, I mean, I know we have Thanksgiving.
We have, first of all, we have Thanksgiving, and it got a little bit squished between Thanksgiving week. Then we also have Veterans Day that's hitting this week, and then we also have some of our other stuff coming up. So unfortunately, we're always getting to a real slow time in between Christmas and New Year's, or Thanksgiving and Christmas.
So I was just thinking, because Chip has it already, it's not like it's going to take a lot of prep for staff.
I don't know that the... It's not, yeah, it's not really a preparation. It would be, you know, let us look at it and see if we can't squeeze a meeting, and I'm definitely open to that.
And I want to thank you very much for putting a glossary and talking about ground rules and setting the stage. I think it's been very helpful, so thank you very much.
It's been really great.
Yeah.
It's my expectation.
Oh, good. And we can always, as I said, there's...
Take our screw bay on the way out.
Oh, yeah.
We are flexible process, so we look forward to continued feedback, and we can always change things. Oh, Mr. Lynton, please go ahead, sorry about that. I need to blast it, that's an action item. I'll text him.
Very appreciative, everyone. You know, I was just gonna, just asking one quick thing. I appreciate you recording this meeting. Will this, will the plan for water meetings and the workshops, will those go into a separate playlist on the Nevada Irrigation District YouTube page?
It could, I don't know, I don't know how YouTube works.
Yeah, they can. I think we can categorize it.
Yeah, like a plan for water channel.
Oh, somewhere easy. That would be very cool.
My people watch it.
We make them do it when you're on a call.
It'll be under the board, and you need to link them into the plan for water page.
Okay, yeah, we'll figure something out, that's a good idea. Anyone else in the public before we sign off? All righty, I'm seeing none, so that is all we have for this evening. Thank you, Chip. Thank you, board, and I'll turn back control.
What little I have.
What little you have.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer, and thank you to the staff for all bearing with us tonight, and we'll look forward to seeing you all next time. Meeting's adjourned.
See you tomorrow.
Yeah, see you tomorrow.